Hi Eric, this side. I'll save you the trouble to go over here. No problem. Freeze! Hey, thanks buddy. So... Welcome back to my channel. If you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. Alright, look at this. Look at this. There you go. Shit all roped off. Stuff. Mr. Walker's here. Want to welcome everybody to my livestream of the Southmont Borough Council Meeting for November. Come on in through this door. You're in the tax collector's office. I feel like I'm doing my civic duty just standing out here and telling everybody to go in this door instead of this door. In fact, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna put this there, because I think they're done working for the day. That might help. Hopefully it does. If you're coming to the Borough Council Meeting here in Southmont today, you want to go in the tax collector's office, the regular meeting door is is closed off. Big X. Stay away. Danger. Danger, danger. Stay out of there. They're cleaning up some asbestos and doing some work on the project, so you don't want to go out of there. Sir, that's the entrance if you want to go in. I'm just starting up my livestream here and there, and everybody wants to go in that way, so... Garbage man's here too. That's good. Okay, so I'm gonna go in here in about two or three minutes. We have the election results up there. I'll show you those in a moment too. I'd say I did pretty darn good with everything considered. So? Got Richard's way in a moment. Step over here. Do that. Yep. Afternoon, Richard. Congratulations. You did pretty good. Pretty enough for another four years. How about it? Let me shake your hand. You did pretty good. The other door. You did pretty good. Yep. Don't even care that I lost, honestly. I did what I wanted to do, which was which was functionally have someone removed from their seat, which is happening, so... Thank goodness. So... There's Doug. There's my notification to go in for a few moments. In about 10 minutes, the meeting will be starting. So... Everybody's showing up right on time. How you doing Doug? I'm good. I'm cold. But congratulations, by the way. I don't know if I congratulated the other day, but congratulations again, so... Good showing. Oh, the cool kids park in the back. I take it, huh? Well, how you doing Gene? I'm good. I'm good. A little cold. I'm gonna head in now, so... Might as well. I've done enough talking for the for the duration. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Head in here. Camera. I imagine they moved chambers. Let me sneak by here, sir, if it's okay. Thank you. Thanks Sam. Feel a little more official there, if you're not on the end of the table, like, you know? Well, I understand, but like, you know, not stuck on the on the end end. You're like behind the table now. Get all the leaves. What's that? What's that? Cold enough. My son gave a video the other day. He's walking so That's in South Oakland. Phones are gonna dude. Sure.
Call the meeting to order. Right to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder to please mute your devices. Amanda Kipper.
Anthony Kuiper.
Here.
Doug Barry.
Here.
Richard Burkert.
Here.
Herb Ewald.
Here.
Eugene Capcela.
Here.
Natalie Bicker.
Here.
Bob Morgan.
Here.
Terry Spiker.
Alright, public comment. There's a five-minute time limit. Please clearly state your name and where you reside. Are you here? I don't have a list. Jim Daly.
Jim Daly. I live at 26 Harding Street. I want to address the council with a ongoing parking issue that has been happening in my neighborhood, especially it's become very apparent and aggressive these past few months. I have an next-door neighbor that oh, probably last month, only took about a week or so, and she was granted handicap parking. So Borough painted the line, installed the sign. Okay, they had two spots because her and her son have placards in their vehicles. So they are parking on shady lanes behind their house. Okay, that's fine. Short time after that, she stopped parking in the handicap, then she started parking on the front street. Okay, nobody ever said you had to park in handicap parking. However, she has been very again aggressive, outwardly verbal in expressing her displeasure with everybody else parking there. You have to understand, Harding Street and shady lane, that's public street parking. I really want to collect here. I've lived in Southmont Borough all my life. Born and raised here. My wife and I raised a family here. We lived in that house almost 40 years. Never a parking issue. Never. All the neighbors down there get along. Except her. All the neighbors are respectful to each other. Except her. All the neighbors understand public street parking and how it works. Except her. We have to endure almost every day outbursts from her when she's out in her yard or standing up on the street. Yelling our names, screaming, carrying on. About everywhere she parks is automatically handicap parking. Even though she has parking spots out back. Reserved for her and her son. This whole issue started when her son got a car to go attend classes at college. Hey, good for him. But when she realized that it's now crowded, she has to parallel park. That's where she gets upset now. Apparently, from my observation and what I've seen, she can't parallel park. So for her, she takes issue with that. She expects to be able to just pull in and pull out. She wants to make back part of shady lane and the front part of Harding Street driveways. She wants to make them private for her and her son. Down there, in those areas, I don't know how many people frequently get down in that area, but I know for one Tony lives down there. You know, the Borough guys go through there all the time. It's tight. Back in the day, when those carmine ironwork homes were built, people were lucky if they had a car. They always went down and took the bus to go to work depending upon it, or if they were lucky to have a driveway. Today's vehicles don't fit. Garages are too small. That's just how it was built back in the day, so people deal with it, they adjust, they work with it. And again, everybody down there in the neighborhood gets along. Everybody understands. Yeah, if you live there, get to park there. People come to visit, relatives or whatever, sometimes they park in the spot. Oh, well. You adjust, you find another spot. When everything clears again, no problems. This neighbor, and I believe, you know, she wanted to be on this agenda again because she wants to move a handicap spot out front. But I guarantee you, she's not gonna want to give up the two in the back. Because they want to see them. Because you have to understand too, if you go look at Harding Street, the area where she wants to propose putting in the handicap, it's not wide enough. You only get about signs are put up to ensure that people didn't park on either side on that turn. It's a definite traffic safety. But of course, down by Corn Alley and further on down, the street widens up. You're able to have street parking. And again, there's no issues. Except for her. She even has been posting things on social media. I don't do social media. I don't care about the drama and the "look at me" type of things that go on in there. I just don't worry about it. But on there, she has openly criticized me. She has openly been
Thank you for
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, but thank you. Next, we have Deb Daly.
Okay, I'll give you a little bit of my background. I've worked in EMS for 32 years. I have worked at Conomall ER for 15. 12 years working in the behavioral health unit of Conomall, and I'm currently working with the trauma traumally ill, it's called hospice care. I'm expressing concern about the additional parking. She wants additional handicap parking in the front across the street from her residence. That's our neighbor. She already has two designated parking spots in the back. One spot is not being used. She saves it for friends that come to visit her that do not have handicap placards in their vehicles. I'm only requesting that this council considers the following. The existing accommodations. Our block already has two accessible spots at that residence. According to the ADA guidelines, additional spots are generally assigned based on an overall public need, not an individual preference. The impact on the community parking in that area, it's tight. Adding more restricted spaces in a small residential area will significantly reduce available parking for the rest of the residents and potentially cause hardship. Clear evidence that is added in spaces that is required. Our neighbor at 27 Harding Street had informed my husband that he needed to park elsewhere when her son got a vehicle, that she wanted to park there. He said, "Okay, I'll park out back." She said, "You can't park there. You parked out in Overbrook Parking Lot", which is a private facility and walk-up. He's almost 70. Why would you expect a 70-year walk up a hill? Okay. So, I would like to share what we have been living through. Just bear with me. I gotta put my volume on. This came from our doorbell camera, and it's just a couple. A couple things. It's her yelling and screaming, carrying on. I'm very nervous. I'm sorry. No, you've got to understand, that's blocks from the elementary school bus. Why do kids have to listen to that? Okay? Feet. I'm sorry, feet. To us, that's a threat. We are very concerned for our safety, living next door to her. Here's another one. That went on for 25 minutes that night. 25 minutes. That is, I mean, if I, what, I wanted to call crisis, but we knew it would make it worse. I have this yellow binder right here. You are free to look at it. Of everything that this woman has done. She has gone through our mail, our packages, gone on our property, sit on our patio. Got, would take photos of our no trespassing signs that has nothing to do with her. Called the police numerous times, wanting to press charges on us for harassment. This is harassment. We fall under the older adult protection act because we are over the age of 60. She wants to say about her disability, this is totally harassment, right here. Our blue binder. That's at the parking streets.
Hey, everybody. Okay, cool. Thanks. For today, that probably makes the most sense. Hi, everybody. John Clanchar, Delia Street. I really didn't have much to say, other than I wanted to congratulate everybody that ran and successfully secured a seat in this council. I think we all did a pretty good, I think we all did pretty good. I guess probably most everybody expected the way it turned out. I gotta be honest with you. I didn't expect to get 11% of the vote. So that must mean something, you know? I mean, 252 people, at least last time I checked, that's what I got. Think what I have to say is important. Think what I have to say isn't stupid, isn't harassing people, isn't anything. I'll admit it, I ran to, I ran to get somebody off of this council, and that was Mr. Ewald. So he's no longer going to be a council member as of January. Thank God. I'm not going to speak on anything specific that I know of about, you know, I've been contacted by some people about parking issues, because I've had parking issues myself. And, you know, people have the right to express themselves. If you're out in the street, you can speak however you want to. It's not illegal, and frankly, you know, I mean, you guys as council members pretty much have to listen to what anybody has to say, but it's not your place to get in the middle of neighbor squabbles. You know, I mean, I guess, I guess I could suggest this to council members. Sheri is, she's not paying attention to what I'm saying right now. Sheri, you're a real estate agent, okay, you know, and oftentimes people have these issues, you know? Maybe you ought to talk to them about, you know, maybe getting a couple of neighbors together and coming up with a consortium to buy out some of these problem neighbors. I mean, I've offered it myself. Hey, look, if you guys hate me that bad, a couple of people come at me with, like, a real offer, you know, and if it works for me, I'll leave. Absolutely, you know, but, you know, I mean, Herb thought it was a joke. He offered me $50, you know, I mean, these properties are worth something. You know, I mean, Sheri will attest that. She makes her living on the fact that these properties are worth something, so... You know, if people have such problems with their neighbors, I mean, it's not the Borough Council's place to intervene. It's really only the police chief's place to intervene. You know, and furthermore, we don't live under an HOA. I think some people expect HOA rules from you guys, you know? They don't understand that, you know, the Constitution gives people rights that are sometimes rude. That are sometimes, that people cannot stand. You still have the right to do it. I mean, I've proven that, how many times I've come in here and spoken pretty freely and use constitutionally protected words. I mean, I have. And I haven't been arrested ever for that, you know, because I have the right to. I mean, I was actually charged for using protective, constitutionally protected language. And that was actually in public, out on the street, but, you know, not everybody can do their job properly, you know, and I also wanted to bring up the fact that Ian Osowski is a bad cop. There is a complaint on here, a formal complaint from Frank Primmel, and that has to do with Officer Ian Osowski kicking his door in. I mean, I know that, and that's common knowledge, and I'm not going to speak on anything more than I know about that, but I want to let every municipality that, West Hills Police has jurisdiction over, that Ian Osowski is not, is not the kind of cop that anybody wants in these nice neighborhoods, okay? We don't need, we don't need somebody that's going to be kicking down doors and charging anybody with anything they think. Okay? I mean, we've come to a settlement on one time he was sued, you know, and that's, that's really it, you know? I want to actually commend you guys for actually holding everybody to the time limit today too. That's, you know, I'm not going to speak any longer than I'm supposed to. I'm just gonna fill up the entire time that I have, which I believe is kind of running to the end, but yeah, I just want to stress, you know, that like, and since you guys don't really comment, which is actually good, you guys really, it's not your place to really comment, unless you feel compelled to during the public comment time. You know, that, I mean, it's not your place to get in between neighbor squabbles, like what was brought up today, like what I've brought up. You know, it's your place to figure out the legislate. Okay? You are the legislative branch of this government. Amanda is actually the executive branch, and Anthony is, you know, so they would be the ones who you would speak to about handling any kind of these problems, or the chief of police, obviously. So, you know, just thanks, everybody.
Anybody else for public comment? Alright. Next up, we have to approve opening the garbage bids. Have a motion to be settled? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Alright, the first bid's gonna be from Waste Management. Bear with me, because this is the first time we've bid it this way, so... Okay. So, for the carded residential waste service, for one year, 95-gallon trash cart would be $16.35 per unit per month. The 35-gallon trash cart would be $14.72 per unit per month. For a two-year service, the 95-gallon trash cart would be $16.92 per unit per month. 35-gallon trash cart is $15.23 per unit per month. For the third-year service, the 95-gallon would be $17.51 per unit per month. 35 gallons would be $15.76 per unit per month. Thirty-five gallons would be fifteen dollars and seventy-six cents per unit, per month. For the carded residential, oh, I'm sorry, the first one was including an annual spring cleanup. For the carded residential waste service, including one bulk item monthly pickup, the prices are all the same as the first one. For the carded residential recycling, one year would be fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents per unit. With a monthly cost of four dol, or annual cost is fifty-seven sixty per unit, monthly cost is four dollars and eighty cents per unit. For two years, the annual cost is fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents per unit. Monthly cost, four dollars ninety-seven cents per unit. For the third year, sixty-one dollars sixty-eight cents per unit annually. Five dollars and fourteen cents per unit monthly. On the back of that page you guys have, we're gonna move to manual. So the manual residential pickup, including an annual spring cleanup, there is no bid. There's also no bid for manual with the bulk item, or manual recycling. So this is all just for carded, for waste management. Any questions before?
So the, so the carded means they will get, the receptacle have to use, and they dump it?
Yes. All right, next is for pro-disposal. So, carded residential waste pricing with an annual spring cleanup. First year, sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents per month for a ninety-five gallon. Thirty-five gallons, fifteen dollars sixty-eight cents per month. And if an extra ninety-six gallon cart is needed, it's eight dollars per month. For two years, sixteen ninety-seven per month for ninety-five gallon. Thirty-five gallons would be fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per month. And an extra ninety-six gallon cart is eight dollars per month. The third year, seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents per month for ninety-five gallons. Thirty-five gallons, sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents per month. And an extra ninety-six gallon cart is eight dollars per month. For a carded residential with a monthly bulk item, for 2026, ninety-five gallon is sixteen dollars and seven cents per month. Thirty-five gallons, fifteen dollars and seven cents per month. And an extra ninety-six gallon cart is eight dollars per month. Twenty-twenty-seven, sixteen dollars sixty-eight cents per month for ninety-five gallons. Thirty-five gallons, fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents per month. And an extra ninety-six gallon cart is eight dollars per month. For 2028, sixteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per month for ninety-five gallons. Fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per month for a thirty-five gallon. And eight dollars for an extra ninety-six gallon cart. For the carded residential recycling pricing, 2026, it would be twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars annually. The monthly cost is two thousand two hundred and twenty-five per month. For 2027, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars annually. Three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. For 2028, forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars annually. Three thousand dollars, five hundred, three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. Yeah. And there was also no bid for manual pickup from pro-disposal.
Was the waste management for the whole borough, or pro-resident?
Pro-resident.
So, and apparently, promote, Waste Management does not offer you the extra cart, right?
We do.
It's just in a different portion of it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, it's a couple pages thereafter. Right there.
Okay. So for Waste Management, we'll go back. For 2026, an additional ninety-six gallon tote is eight dollars and three cents per month. For 2027, it's eight dollars and fifty-nine cents per month. And for 2028, nine dollars and nineteen cents per month.
You say, we have the option, if you wanna buy a second container, that's cost eight or nine dollars. And who, how do you go about paying that?
I believe that would go directly through the companies.
The bulk of the garbage is taken care of by the tax payer, right? Whoever is involved.
Yeah, yeah, you get the annual garbage and survey maintenance, though.
How would an extra can work? Do you get billed month, would the resident get billed monthly for that, or do you? Can they just pay for the year? You say, well, here.
With WM, you can pay for the year, or we could bill quarterly.
Same as pro.
Amanda?
Yes.
Was there any manual residential for pro?
No.
No, so no bids?
No, no bids for manual, both carded.
For our recycling, just on the bid paper, it was for annually, they wanted, you guys wanted annual price. If you break it up by nine fifty, you'll see what comes out, you know, what it is, per month, per resident.
And that's up to us to decide whether or not we wanna opt in, or is that up to each individual resident, if they wanna opt into recycling?
That would, that would be your choice.
That would be the borough?
The borough's choice.
To decide that, 'cause up until now, we haven't done recycling.
We did it one time.
Yes.
But when we dropped those same population.
Yeah, they had to pick it up down here.
So Amanda, what were the recycling?
So for 2026, the annual cost is twenty-six thousand seven hundred. Monthly, two thousand two hundred and twenty-five. For 2027, annual is thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Monthly, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five. For 2028, annual is forty-two thousand nine hundred. Monthly, three thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
The recycling is in a separate container?
It is.
It would be separate from the normal, normal reception.
Yeah, it'd be a separate.
It would be a separate container.
Ninety-five gallon container, yes. Uh, we would probably be separate.
That's a decision, in and of its own, if you wanna do the recycling. Have you decided that?
Would you say two two five?
That's for the whole ground.
Jesus.
That's this number right here. For residents.
So, Eric, what do we need to do here?
Well, either the council can make a decision, or you can table it to the December meeting, and prepare to make a decision at this point.
Amanda? Have you calculated the total cost for the waste man, you gave us a number for pro, but you did not give us for waste management. Can you do that, do you have them calculate it up? What it's gonna cost the borough to have their service? And we, that way we can compare apples to apples, and oranges to oranges. We don't have that total figure, and I don't have my computer.
What do you mean, for recycling?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you gave us pro-disposal, you gave us twenty-six thousand seven hundred, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, and forty-two thousand nine hundred. Now, I'd like to see the same figures for waste management, so we can make an intelligent decision.
Well, she did, she just, they weren't, they weren't calculated out for the month, so... You'd have to cut, yeah.
Per person, or household.
I guess the first question is, do we want to go into recycling, or don't we? And then the second question is on the, on the actual cost for pro-disposal versus waste management for regular garbage.
Is the recycling cost effective, or is it just going to add to the monthly fee that residents have to pay for their normal garbage collection?
It would be in addition.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
It'd be an additional cost.
Well, excuse me, what's the limit, when we're at which point the population needs to be required to recycle?
I don't know if there's a specific requirement.
I think it's a population point.
Sorry, yeah, Pennsylvania requires a certain population based on a radius. I can't, I don't believe you all are over that threshold.
You guys don't qualify for that. You're not mandated, right? At your discretion.
Yep, yep, at your discretion.
I'm just concerned that really balloons up the monthly payment.
Well, it does their household, I mean, the recycling.
Did you say we have nine hundred and fifty residences?
Yes.
About a thousand, so, all of those numbers in the annual cost just move it over three decimal points. Twenty-six dollars a year, per person, for residents, would be with the cost for one year. And thirty-seven dollars and forty-two.
Very simple.
For recycling, right.
Yeah. So, on the thirty-five gallon, that, that is a smaller size, and you have seniors there, so that's for the senior citizen, or that's just for a one-person household, or?
For people throwing a lot of trash.
Yeah, either one. I think we just put senior there, generally, do we get that, but...
The majority of your, and I don't wanna misspeak, but I think, you know, Ralph and I would both agree that the majority of your homes would get a ninety-five gallon, or ninety-six gallon cart. The smaller cart would be for somebody who requests it, whether it be a senior, or anybody that has a low volume, would request that cart. Like, the majority of the people in the borough would be a ninety-five, ninety-six gallon cart.
And I don't wanna speak either for us on pro, but from WM's standpoint, I would caution, since you all do the billing, to open up thirty-five gallons to everybody. 'Cause then you all are gonna be receiving a lot of calls about people wanting to try out the thirty-five, or whatnot, 'cause then you're communicating that to us. Just something to keep in mind, thirty-five gallons typically, you know, senior citizens, folks that, you know, the kids are out of the house, they're older now. You know, easier for them to move, and they just don't have as much garbage. Makes it easier for you all to control that process.
Thirty-five gallon container that you provide, what comparison is there between an ordinary, normal garbage?
So the thing is, unfortunately, when you go to Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart, any of those stores, there's various sizes that you can purchase. So, I mean, I'd say, for the most part, you'd buy a thirty-five or sixty-four at the store, but they sell ninety-six gallon as well.
So, if you opted out of the ninety-five gallon, and got the, there would be no cost, got the thirty-five gallon, correct?
No, it's fourteen seventy-two. Instead of sixteen thirty-five, or, you know, depending on which company. So, we have a lot of...
If we open this up totally variable, we're gonna have a, we're keeping nightmare.
Yeah, yeah.
A big size, little size. We need to standardize something, you know, you wanna, you wanna vote for recycling, if that's feasible, then everybody does it.
So we have a lot...
If you're gonna do the ninety-five, whatever, otherwise, you're gonna have a real mess on your hands, big containers, little containers, recycling, no recycling, no.
Right, 'cause that was...
It becomes a boondoggle over here, honey.
That was gonna be my, another question, 'cause if you get two ninety-five gallon, one's eight dollars, we'll say, what if you got a large one and then a smaller one?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they would do that, but, yeah.
Instead of having two ninety-five gallon...
Typically, from waste management standpoint, additional containers, you're gonna get another ninety-six, we're not gonna start giving a ninety, a thirty-five, and then that causes a mess on our end, too, with just inventory and...
And I think part of the idea behind adding the recycling is, 'cause I remember in earlier discussions with both of you guys, that the recycling, having the extra recycling bin, and people actually getting rid of their recyclables, and kinda negates the need, in most cases, for a second tote.
That's true. People are more, like, when naturally you go from an unlimited free-for-all to curb to a cart service, residents are gonna have to educate even themselves. So if you do have other outlets like that, you aren't correct, it depends on, you know, they have to pay more attention to where they're putting their trash and recycling.
So right now, we have a lot of people that just put bags out, so that's going away with that.
Right.
A question about, Mel, if we go with this system, the, each individual resident has to provide a designated area where that can has to sit, correct? So that they can come and pick it up, put it in.
Yeah, at the curb, yeah.
Does it have to be on the street, or on the...
Again, I don't wanna...
It's gonna be whole.
WM, like, I know we go through a whole education phase, 'cause the industry as a whole is gonna in the cart direction from traditional, so, you know, we work with the municipality, and then have a letter sent out to every resident, giving them information like that, and then the company that we partner with when we deliver carts, there's a cart hanger on every single cart, that has information on where to place your container for service, so... That's, that's my answer.
So what we do typically... So what we do typically is, when we deliver them, we do the same thing, but we deliver them ourselves, our crew does. So we'll, a lot of times, place them where they should be, and then we'll put a, um, a little pamphlet in with the cans that will, uh, show where to place them. But we typically put them exactly how they should be, because we deliver them, and we, we know.
On the street, or on the east?
Typically, where the garbage goes now is, would be very good, um, for the cart.
Most people put it on the east.
Yeah.
What do you do with the old kids?
We get rid of them.
Or you can tell your residents, they can clean them out if they're fairly new, and recycle and put their kids' sporting equipments in, things like that. But yeah, if not, we would pick them up as trash. Yeah, exactly, baseball bats, golf clubs. Do you all currently have the annual cleanup, or what's your bulk?
Yeah, we do an annual. And what about our electronics? That's through a different company.
I, I guess I'll just say this, um, you know, if you guys, uh, like what most other places are doing, they're going with the carts, and they're going with a, uh, once a week, or, yeah, once a week bulk item pickup in lieu of the cleanup, um, you know, if you guys are willing to let that option, looks like we're the low bid. If you guys are looking for a, a spring cleanup, um, versus the bulk item, uh, it looks like it's waste. I mean, it's just, that's just, that's just.
Correct, yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. Based on the numbers, waste management is lower, if the spring is important, and that's what you all are looking for. If you all are good with doing a monthly bulk item in lieu of the cleanup, then pro's number is cheaper.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. That's just the.
The way the numbers fell.
The way the numbers fell, so.
It's nice to see friendly competition. No, I appreciate your candiness, really.
Yeah, we're being transparent.
Right, right.
Based on the figures that I just said, be ready to make the money to go with, um, the waste management.
This system will, should eliminate garbage bags out in the alley, let the crows rip open and throw.
Yeah, that's another part of going to carts.
Yeah, I'll pick up.
You don't have as much loose trash, cleans up the neighborhood, the community.
Neighbors put it out, plastic, not supposed to do it.
Now, what I like to say is, is that most municipalities that do go with the carts, end up going with a once a month versus a cleanup, a once a month bulk item pickup. I don't know if that, you know, you guys put that option in there, I don't know if that, you know, gets it off the curb, it's not sitting there all year long, waiting for spring cleanup. Um, that's something, if you guys wanna consider.
And that's on a monthly basis?
Yes, it gets the large item monthly, picked up and cleaned up, off the curb.
It's not, it's not refrigerator, or nothing like that?
It can be if the free-on, yeah.
We pick up fridges and freezers, as long as the free-on is properly removed by a certified technician. With the proper tags, yeah.
Unless somebody wants to make a motion, maybe we need just a little bit more discussion, so that we can evaluate it.
I think the question is the recycling, whether we wanna get back into the recycling and on.
I make a motion that we do the program with the one bulk item per month.
That's recycling or not?
Yeah, well, the recycling type, or whatever it's called, was it a recycling question? That's, that includes what, one bulk item, right?
Yeah, monthly.
I wanna make sure my motion's correct. One bulk item, and then regular garbage pickup, as it is now. That's my motion.
Which company is that for? Which company?
Which company?
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't get a total number on, on waste management yet, but I, I have them for pro.
So your motion is for pro disposal for the carded residential waste pricing, including one bulk item monthly pickup, including the carded residential recycling pricing.
Is that, are you with pro?
I am.
Okay, you're with pro.
I'm with waste management.
Is that correct?
Whichever one offers that, but one bulk item.
They both do.
They both do.
Jesus.
They both do.
All right, well, like I said, I still didn't get my other figures, but, uh.
All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
We would be with, uh, we would probably be with pro, wouldn't we?
No, they're, they're the more expensive.
We have to go with the lowest, anyhow, don't we? By law. I thought when you had a bid, you had to go by the lowest bidder.
We have to go with the lowest responsible bidder.
Huh?
Lowest responsible bidder.
Well, they're both responsible, so I wanted to be with the lowest responsible bidder, my, my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion?
I'm still not sure which company he's, he's talking about, in the motion.
Oh, he said the lowest responsible bidder for the carded residential waste pricing, which would be pro disposal. Last call for a second. All right, the motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion to table this till the December meeting?
Yeah, I made that motion.
I'll second that. So does that mess you guys up in getting things here, or start?
Cart standpoint, you know, puts it up against the timeline, which, I mean, again, you'll wanna make the best decision for your residents, so we understand that. Again, it sounds like, do you all wanna monthly bulk, or do you all wanna keep your annual spring cleanup? That's, that's what it comes down to, cause one of us is cheaper on one, and the other one's cheaper on the other.
Yeah, we have to decide.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I think that's the biggest question is.
So, for us, we have no problem delivering carts, and we, in a timely manner, have them here for the residents before the end of the year.
Our December meeting is earlier.
Yeah, it'll be December eighth.
December eighth, at four o'clock?
I would much rather have the option to put one bulk item out, rather than having it later on your house for a year until, so we decide to come up through and pick it up.
Now, we can pick up bulk items outside of the annual cleanup, it's just gonna cost the residents, they would still have the annual spring cleanup, if that's the option you chose, where they could contact somebody outside of that, if it's on the complete opposite time of the year, to say, get rid of the love seat or something, and pay one hundred and twenty bucks. No, I understand.
All right, so, so there was a, a motion and a second to table this for the December meeting. And all in favor?
Agreed.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Jesus, that was pain. Thank you. Cherry, thanks for that, though, I mean. Figure, figure it out.
All right, so moving on to correspondence received. Uh, we have a formal complaint notice from Frank Primal Jr., dated ten twenty-eight twenty-five. We also have a request to move a handicapped parking space from Shady Lane to Harding Street from Julie Fochsee, Fochsee. Amanda, do we need action on that request this time?
If you guys wanna review it further, we can move it to the December meeting, if you wanna, if you guys wanna take a look at the area and, and get a better idea.
Yeah.
We need to table.
Okay, we don't, we just have it under correspondence, we don't have it for action, that is just clarifying.
This picture we have, is it a picture of what Daley they're talking about? The Daley they're talking?
I don't think it's a picture you have.
It is something.
It's just a period, yes, there's.
That's where she moved to.
All right, so.
It's not a handicapped spot, it's just.
All right, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep moving. Um, we'll, we'll discuss that at the December meeting. Uh, next up is minutes, we need to approve the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Some of.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. West Hills Regional Police.
For the month of October, the police department had three hundred and fifty-one reports of service. Seventy-seven of those were in Southmont. yearly total so far in Southmont is seven hundred and eighty-seven out of three thousand, six hundred and six. Five traffic citations were issued, along with eight warnings. Uh, one report of a accident in Southmont Boulevard, and it was a vehicle into a parked vehicle. And, and a note is, we participated in National Drug Takeback Day on October twenty-sixth, where we collected twenty-six and a half pounds of unused or unwanted medications, which were then destroyed by the DEA. And during trick-or-treat, there was, uh, nothing of incense in the report.
All right. Uh, Southmont Volunteer Fire Company?
Yes. Uh, for the month of September, we only have a total of seven calls. The breakdown is, there were three in the borough, four assists, and they are in the borough, one vehicle accident, as the police reported, and two assist EMS. And then there was only four outside the borough for automatic fire alarms. I think in the news, everybody's, have noticed that there unfortunately has been quite a few deaths and fires between Pittsburgh and through this area. Uh, Southmont's actually looking forward, hoping over the winter, we can get participated in distributing smoke detectors. I think that's usually the number one cause, is why these people aren't getting out of their homes in time. Uh, so we're gonna look at maybe getting some smoke detectors through the Camerian Red Cross as one, uh, usually Home Depot, then get detectors, and then make them available for free to the borough residents. So we're hopefully, you know, over the winter, we can progress on that. I hate to always wait till Fire Prevention Week, Fire Prevention's year round, so.
Will that be advertised again, Jim?
Oh, yes, it will, absolutely, yeah. We have a good response through our Facebook page. That's really been reaching out and, and connecting with the residents, and we got a lot of good feedback for all the different things that we do. So, yeah, it's definitely very positive.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you. Uh, is there any reports in the packet? Solicitors report?
Can I get, can we get back to them?
Engineer. Oh, I stepped the engineer.
Two months ago, there's some folks in here with, uh, stormwater issue up in Gardner and Diamond, uh, up at the corner. We were able to come up with a plan, sent to Amanda to see if, uh, get quotes to maybe address that, pretty simple fix. Um, don't think it's, needs advertised, cause it's probably under the bid threshold. Amanda has that, and I understand we found some more asbestos, like, week one of, of the improvement project. So I think Amanda has on the agenda to change order for that.
Hey, while you're talking about asbestos, are they doing the entire building, or is this part of the building? Now, how can that be, how can it be okay in one part, and not okay in the other? I don't understand that.
Uh, asbestos is harmful, only harmful when it comes airborne.
Fryable, yes.
Right?
It's fryable.
So it's been here for a hundred and fifty years.
And we have people die left and right because of it.
So, yeah, it's because of the code-related work that we're doing, is why we've got it banned. Correct.
But I, I can't imagine they come in and or whatever you wanna call it, safe, and the other one gets, you know, they have to get dreamed out.
Yeah.
What's the answer to that?
It's what we're working on.
We didn't, it wasn't in the scope of work to tear apart this half of the building, but once you tear it apart, you gotta put it back together. Costs a lot of money, right?
Well, it's, we're not getting it free on the other part of the building either.
Cause that's where they're going to work.
Yeah.
I mean, it just doesn't make one bit of sense to me. It's like doing half of a job.
Well, that's what we're doing, half the building.
That's, that's exactly what, what you're gonna get, half of the building.
Well, we don't have twice the money.
Moral of the story, dump them over here.
They stop being disturbed here, okay? They're not hammering and jacking, sawing things.
How is it being disturbed in the rest of the building, if it's not being disturbed?
Because they're taking things out, and they have to, when they take it out, they have to dispose of it properly.
I know, exactly. I did that, I did that at the church.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks.
Properly, it's coming back to him?
Yeah.
Okay, I just had a question on Dollar World. Are we getting anywhere with them? It's worse, it's like ten times worse, Franklin Street. Yeah, and, and they, if you go on some of the apps, um, my OnX app, they, they actually have an address, Dollar World, four forty-two Cooper Avenue. One five nine oh six. But it's, there's, it's like a junkyard down there now. There's like five or six junked cars on that lot. And just because it's not up here, doesn't mean we shouldn't take care of it.
That's something, uh, council would.
It hasn't, it's.
Is that Nesco?
Yes.
Like Nesco?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and there's like five or six junked cars on that, on that property right now.
My question is, how can you enforce one area and leave the other one go?
We're not.
We've got other areas in this borough that are just as bad or maybe worse.
It is in this borough, it is in this borough, and there's six junk cars. They're using it as a junkyard, and we're not done for a junkyard. It's, it's terrible.
As to my question, well, how are you gonna enforce that, if you don't enforce the other part of the, in this borough that are out of compliance? This just doesn't make sense to me either. What do you have an ordinance for, if you're not gonna enforce it?
All right. Do we need, Eric, for you to do that, do you need action from the borough, or? Cause it's not on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, I, I don't, I'll come for the December meeting if there's something that needs to be taken care of. There's other actions we can take that before that, so there's not, nothing needed.
So you can drive and all that.
Yeah.
Motion for you to drive.
No, you don't need a, not a legal, motion, no.
All right, Street Commissioners report, Sam.
Um, as of Friday, we had about four hundred and seventy-five, uh, cubic yards of leaves picked up. Uh, we got, uh, three more, uh, sets today. Aside from that, I got nothing else.
Are we ready for winter?
All the plows are good to go. Um, we have a spreader on one truck, the, the, uh, yeah, uh, put on, but it's real simple for them to go on.
I have a question, Sam. What is the holdup in getting these leaves picked up? There are piles everywhere in this borough. They didn't pick up a leaf today, so it was after eight o'clock, and they start at seven. They have to take the truck over and empty it from Friday's pickup. That's what, you take it over and empty it as soon as you pick it up, then you bring the truck over, it's sitting here, ready to go at seven o'clock, you don't have to go to the dump. Plus, they fill it up with gas. I've been observing what's going on, I know what's going on. There's, the pamphlet they send out in the spring of the year states, the leaves shall be raked to the curb line. We have people that are raking leaves on Diamond Boulevard, I noticed it. They spent almost a half an hour there, because they're pulling them from that wall. That wall out to the street belongs to the resident, not to the borough. So we're doing borough residents' work, that's nice, I wish I could get them, do mine. There, that's why they're not getting nothing done. They should be able to get five, six loads a day, if they work at it. The week before the election, they didn't pick up a leaf, weather was beautiful. The week of the election, they picked up leaves on the election day. That was it for the day. And, you know, you say you work through your lunch hour, that's fine, but if you do work through your lunch hour, at least work, get some stuff done, because then they leave at two o'clock, which, that's early, because they're not supposed to leave till two-thirty. There's a lot of things that are not, a lot of people don't observe it. I go out and I see what's going on. And I wish somebody would investigate why this isn't being done. And then, when I come up here today, Amanda approached me, ordered me off the property. I own more of this property than you'll ever own because you don't pay taxes or nothing else. So don't, don't come up and try to order me off, off my property.
I instructed her because you were harassing the employees again today.
I was not harassing anybody. I was out here with my camera tech.
And we have had.
I have pictures right here.
We have had multiple meetings with you.
Don't, don't tell me that, Doug. You're wrong. And anybody that says you're right, they're wrong too.
And I'm tired of you sitting here belittling people all the time.
I am not belittling you. I'm trying to get some honesty gained out of an honest, from person.
I drove around the borough on Friday, Herb.
What did you see?
All the leaves, all the leaves were cleaned up. And then the wind blew and all the leaves.
They were not.
Yes, they were.
You're a liar, or, period.
Well, in order to.
You go out there right now and you tell me.
Okay, we're moving on.
You go out there right now and tell me.
We're moving on.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't wanna face the truth now.
Borough Managers' Report.
You're the problem in this borough, right? You, you are. You catch people sleeping and they don't even, they don't even investigate.
Shut the fuck up, Herb. You've been gavelled. We're gonna keep moving on. There was nothing for the Borough Managers' Report. Were there any questions for Amanda?
Uh, the other thing I had, I did speak with Jim and his wife about the handicap parking situation and tax. Um, glad they were able to come here today and speak a little bit from her perspective, things to consider. Thank you.
Alright, Administrative Borough Services, I do not have anything. Community planning and improvements, Richard?
Uh, the comprehensive planning programs, uh, again, anticipated to take eighteen months to complete. Uh, we have a steering committee meeting on Thursday night between five and seven o'clock, uh, at Brownstown Borough Offices. Again, this is the larger group that has municipal representatives as well as, pointed members from fire departments and, uh, the school district and just a variety of different stakeholders in the Hill West Hills area. Um, uh, council members are invited to attend. I think, uh, I think we've designated, uh, Doug and, um, uh, yeah, you know, if you could, um, uh, ten to five o'clock on Thursday, and we have somebody else representing, uh, Southmont, I think that'd be, be good. Just to get, get a sense of where, where, what, how much we've accomplished to date and where the, this whole process is headed.
This is five p.m. Thursday in Brownstown Borough.
Brownstown Borough, yeah. There's a lot of municipal cooperation and again, I think, you know, involvement, you know, from this borough debate, a great panel.
Okay. Any questions for Richard? Emergency Management?
Uh, nothing to report.
Finance, Sherry?
Um, we'll do the budget under old and new business.
Water Authority, Eugene?
Nothing to report.
Uh, stormwater?
Um, we have to approve advertising, uh, the December meeting as the public MS four meeting. So we need a motion to do that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I have nothing for Personnel, Police, Bob?
Chief just gave the report.
Property Maintenance, Streets and Sidewalks, Matt?
No, hold on. I'm glad you got to take care of with, with them because they had asked me a couple times about that. And I've had some other residents' concerns as far as the, uh, catch basins with all the leaves and everything piling up in there.
Yeah, can, is it, I know you can put stuff in, but I think part of the challenge is, like, residents tend to put the leaves in the street. And that's when they end up in the storm drains. And if, like, they're supposed to put them at the curb. Um, so any more education we can do to help alleviate that issue? Like, you're still gonna have leaves that blow out and stuff, but when you have, you know, piles of leaves.
Yeah, we can make it more like prevalent in the newsletter. More available. Snow. That's a Sam Kaboom.
Man, even on your webpage, I don't know if you can put photographs in there, maybe.
Bob, back.
Yes, no.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a good idea. They'll all be gone soon.
Yep. Uh, Shade Tree?
Uh, Shade Tree, uh, we submitted an application in February, I believe, uh, to allow us to do a tree Shade Tree Inventory and Maintenance Program. And, uh, um, that's been pending the option of a, uh, state common law budget, which has finally happened. So we should have notification relatively soon. I don't, the shade, revise Shade Tree Ordinance. Uh, were, were you, uh, do you have, do you want to review that? Or you just prefreted, should we follow up with a Shade Tree Committee to discuss it in more detail?
Uh, that would be the option, that the council can review it and we can, if that's something the council wants to move on in the December meeting, Charlie can do it. Or if you want to refer to the Shade Tree Commission for further review, that's.
Committee's still.
Committee, should, Commission's what we're proposing.
Proposing, yes.
Uh, to the committee, that would be acceptable as well.
I made some, some notes on that, Richard, so.
Refer back to the committee for further changes.
Yeah, I read through too. I, my impression is, is, it's, it's adequate and it's well done. It's, you're gonna need additional ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be the starting point.
Yeah.
There were, there were a couple things that need to be tweaked, uh, and then, and then I think, um, after you guys do that, then budget's gonna have to load up how much we need to budget. Because if we're gonna be responsible for taking down the trees, then, um, which this ordinance states, then we're gonna have to put more money in the budget. We're gonna have to figure out, like, how many can we? The only thing in, in this ordinance that we got in the packet was, um, that I, that I had some reservation on where it had the commission hiring. And I didn't, you know, if the council's paying, commission can't be hiring if the council's paying.
Paying for it.
Yeah, so there's just a couple things like that in that. So I don't know if you're having another meeting or.
Uh, I will work Amanda to find a suitable Tuesday to hold that meeting. Probably, uh, early December, I know. I'll call you.
Alright, so new business, old business, we need to approve the 2026 tentative budget.
So the budget. Um, I got it in your packets. And, um, yeah, but I, I have it on. Anyway, so the budget was in your packet. And it's ready to be approved. It includes, there it is. This budget includes a teen mill tax increase. Um, and, and the upper year of township is burned with the policeman, is it correct?
Yes.
So is this corrected as far as that goes? And, um, upper year of township is now coming to West Hills Police, so that has decreased, um, us there. And, um, so that's in your package. So, you know, just, we need a motion to approve it.
This is the tentative budget that will be advertised?
Prove it for advertising is what we need.
I make that motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we need to approve advertising the 2026 tentative budget.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We need to approve advertising ordinance number five fifty-four, setting the tax mileage for 2026.
So moved.
First.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We need to approve advertising ordinance number five fifty-five.
So we'll need to actually table this because we haven't through the bid yet.
We'll need to table Action D. Do I have a motion to table that?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we need a discussion and decision on change order number one for the roof replacement and interior renovation project. Todd?
That is the eighty-eight hundred dollar, um, for additional asbestos abatement. Discovered behind the paneling on the paneling that we moved.
Alright.
Is there any way we could have known that part of turning the paneling out?
Not without getting behind it.
So.
We should know for the future, probably behind this as well. Yeah.
And for, for the record, the actual cost of that was twelve thousand two hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. Um, the contractor gave a credit of three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seven cents, uh, because some of the work that they were going to have to do ended up having to be completed by the asbestos subcontractor. So that brought the total for the change order to eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. When the change order came over, uh, we had Eric look at it and review it with Todd. Um, our solicitor, Eric, uh, ensured that it wasn't something that could have been considered included in the existing scope of work.
Just, and I, I didn't talk to Todd, I talked to another engineer.
The architect.
The architect.
Yeah.
He confirmed that this wasn't, this was not in the scope of work. This would only have been discovered once they were, once they got into the seal, then they discovered the asbestos. And they felt that that, that price was appropriate, given the work that had to be done.
And, uh, and Amanda, where's this eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars coming from?
Oh, worst case scenario, we do have money set aside in the CD that we could use. Uh, that was my initial thought. If we don't have enough, as much carryover as I thought we would, um, we'll just kind of see what the budget's looking like towards the end of the year.
I guess we don't have any options. Nope.
And I think, Todd, if I'm correct, that this has to be done for the work to progress.
Correct.
This is not something we can wait.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, business items, approved ratification of payroll, ten twenty-one through eleven seventeen of twenty-five.
Make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved payment of bills, ten twenty-one through eleven seventeen of twenty-five.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved transfers, ten twenty-one through eleven seventeen of twenty-five.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approved Treasurers' Report for October of twenty-five.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Except Tax Collectors' Report for October of twenty-five.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss legal issues associated with our agreement with our municipal inspection agency.
I need that last.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned to executive session. Uh, Eric, we won't have any action.
No.
You guys just recycle these, don't you?
Yeah.
I mean, like, throw away. Such a waste of paper. Fun meeting. No? No, no? Um, I thought it was kind of fun. I don't know what the fuck his problem is. Um, I'm gonna flip this around and I'm gonna, I know you don't like being on my camera, but I'll speak to you on my camera. What's up?
That's, that's fine.
Um, Sam does a good job, actually. This is Sam, our Street Commissioner, okay? And for some reason, Mr. Ewald has a huge throbbing erection for, uh, Sam, okay, you know? Thanks, Debbie. Thanks for coming today. Thanks for doing everything you do. Appreciate it. Come on out, guys. Are you guys waiting? Okay, I guess they're waiting, so, um. I don't know, man, that was just, you know, I don't know. Another one more month and he's no longer a Borough Councilmember, so you don't, you don't have to deal with that anymore. You know, um, that was, that was the one reason I wanted to run. I didn't care if I, you know. Um, you know, I, I spoke my mind there and a, there a little bit, you know, that, 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 that council isn't there to get involved with neighbor squabbles like, like with, uh, you know, the people down on Shady Lane and the parking and, and just all that, you know? It, that's not, that's not, that's not their place. And I think that's getting a little bit ridiculous them constantly trying, you know, every neighbor could, I, I guess it's the only outlet the neighbors have, but we gotta do better. You know what I mean? So, hey, what's up, man? You know, I, I, that's my take on it, is I think they should just, maybe somebody should, should make it, take a stance, like I said, you know, like, look, there's no, this isn't our, it's not our place, you know? So.
See you guys later.
See you, bud.
Have a good night.
But, I mean, I saw you out working today. You guys were cleaning up leaves, you know? And, uh, I mean, I don't do, I don't touch my leaves because they don't hurt anything. They, they, they buy, they, they, they rot away into the ground and, and bugs and stuff, use them for cover in the wintertime, so I just let them go. I've never raked a leaf in, in, on my property ever. I don't intend to. I don't, I don't. Not gonna, man. I'm, I got, I'm one of the few properties that you know you can just drive right by because I don't, you know? I don't have that many trees.
I don't want to get leaves off my trampoline. That's it.
Right. You know, I mean, they don't bother me at all, you know? I mean, I understand some people have a, have a thing for them. I don't. If you have a thing for leaves, maybe cut down all the trees that are on your property, you know? But I guess around here, you have, you have trees that are mandated, you know? Because we've been hearing the same thing about the shade trees for the past three years. Literally the same thing, nothing, the same report, the same gobbledygook, the sa, just, you can just say, look, nothing's changed. But he, he got the most votes in, in, in the election. Good for him. That, that, great, okay, good. Good, um, yeah, so, uh, I don't know, man, I think you're doing a pretty good job.
We tried.
You know? Whatever, you know, um, so, yeah, um. Care, care to talk about, uh, Councilmember Ewald, um, being ejected from, uh, the, the, the property? What you know about that, since that was spoken about there?
Not on the.
Okay, okay, I got you. I, well, let me tell you this, I will certainly report all about it once, well, once you tell me off the record.
That's fine. But not on the.
Hey, Joan? Hey, Joan? They're in executive session. Why, did you have something you wanted to, do you have important?
I could do my stuff at home, but I want to get the mail at least.
Oh, I think you could probably.
I was gonna say, we had two firemen going on top of it, so he might be able to slink in. He might be able to slink in and grab stuff and run.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Don't know what the heck's going on. The door's still open, still. I don't know if there's, is there a door on there? I mean, there shouldn't be.
Uh, there's a door on the inside too. But I don't, I don't know if it's closed or not.
Should be. Should be, they should be fully, maybe they're not done with, maybe they're not done with kicking everybody out yet. Maybe still people.
That's, that's possible.
Jam jammering.
Back to life.
Something else, something, I, if you don't mind, because I, I saw that because I was checking because I, I was having trouble with signal over there. You have your own Wi-Fi downstairs, don't you?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Um, if it's cool, can you send me the password for next month?
Okay.
Thanks. Because I can't, in there I didn't have connectivity, you know what I mean? I, I don't want to ask her in the middle of the thing, you know, and her saying no, so. That's something I think Amanda would pull on me. You know what I mean? But it doesn't, all, all I'm gonna do is do the meeting, you know what I mean? Just, 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 just so, you know, everybody can connect and hear it. That's the only reason. I'm not asking for anything.
I'll tell you this right now.
Yeah.
I don't connect upstairs to mine.
Right.
It's pretty much just for the denso in that garage because it's all concrete.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
It doesn't bounce.
I got you.
But we'll see what happens.
Yeah, I got, I get, I was getting strong, I was getting strong, you know what I mean? And I pulled it up and I, I don't know if you were open or not, but you know? So, you know?
No, if you were getting strong up here, then there's a chance it would work for you. Yeah, so, yeah. I'm connected to mine right now.
Yeah, it, you guys, you guys have a good one. So I've been having all kinds of trouble with my, Friday, I, I, something went wrong on my laptop. A buddy of mine handed me a, a Wi-Fi adapter. But I was having to use ethernet on my, on my laptop all weekend.
Ethernet's better anyway.
Well, I was using my, that, that, do you have, do you have Atlantic broadband or whatever? Do you have one of those like white pods? How does yours work? Does yours, is yours great or perfect or?
Uh, for my computer at home, I run a hundred and fifty foot ethernet cable through my.
Rightly, right to the modem?
From the modem straight to my computer.
I understand. I, I'm, I, I don't, I don't need, I, like, if I had a desktop, I would, I would, I would go with a wire, okay? But.
Uh, for the wireless ones, is, like, the laptop?
Yeah.
Tablets.
Right, right.
Those seem to do okay.
Do you have any trouble with those white, those white things turning off and on? On you? Okay.
I had to reset it multiple times and we actually got to the point where I started running a Wi-Fi extenders.
Yeah. I have one of those too for one of my, for my one camera. Because I, it was like twenty bucks. I bought that before I had that thing. I'm using that thing right now with, because my, like, I had an ethernet plugged into it. But it kept shutting off, I mean, when I was trying to watch shit all weekend. So like I said, buddy of mine came through in the clutch. Thank you if you're watching. That really helped me out. Now I can just, I can go back to just using my laptop on my lap, which I like to do. Believe it or not, that's, my, if you see me on Facebook, I'm, it's on my lap because it's a laptop.
I have a desktop.
I, I do want to get one of that. I do want to get one soon to do, start doing my editing on and stuff and keep, and keep files on. You know, because like I, I feel, I feel like laptops, you know?
You can edit on laptops.
Oh, I understand that, but like I just, I, I would like to have that, you know what I mean? I'd like to have something.
Actual backups, I mean, I recommend externals.
I, I, I understand all that. I just like to, you know, keep my laptop for when I go out and about. I would actually like, if it wasn't the only machine I had, I would bring it down here and do my live streams from it with like a camera and take five minutes and set everything up because then I can watch the comments easier. This thing here, a comment pops up and it's, it's instantly gone. I can't read them. Every once in a while I'll catch them, you know? And if it's somebody I know, then I can like, you know what I mean? Because I catch names, but like, I get a lot of comments and I'm like, somebody said something. Okay, and I, I have no way to get them once they're, I'm not, listen, I don't sit here and watch my live streams, Sam. I'll, if there's something important, I'll go back through and look at it. But they only come up if I watch them in real time. You know what I mean? I'm not gonna list the like the, the live comments. I get them, I get the ones that are like, people leave after the fact, but.
I know how that works.
You got it. Okay. It's just a pain. Listen, dude.
I may or may not stream on Twitch.
I, I am not, I am not, listen, dude, I, internet man is not me, okay? When my, when, when my buddy decided to help me today, I was like, listen, I was like, if you can tell me where I can, where I can like, put the screwdriver in it and put the half inch socket on it. And I was like, man, I got a ten millimeter. Do I need that? It's metric, right? It was made in Japan. He was like, John, 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 Clanch, John, take a deep breath, okay? It's not Ed Barzinski, you know? You just gotta plug this thing into the side of it and it'll work again. And I was like, oh, yeah, man. It works again, so. Works, you know, I'm good. I'm happy. So, good to see everybody's in for the, what the hell is? Cranky pants about the parking. That's an interesting situation down there too, you know? I mean, there's, there's handicap parking down there. I, I don't.
I actually have something for that too.
Okay, yeah, I understand, I understand too. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish this up here and, you know? Hopefully, hopefully, we can, I have the police commission meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna do a little bit of promoting here real quick, Sam, and then I'll just, you stick around for thirty seconds, okay? But.
I'm not going there.
Okay, good. Um, so tomorrow is the police commission's meeting at five P M. I was supposed to make it out to Adams Township today at twenty-five minutes ago. Obviously, they were dilly-dah. I'm sorry about that. I was gonna try and make it. If this would have been a ten or fifteen minute meeting, I could have, but Adams Township, Salix is really a half an hour from here. You know what I mean? To, for me to get out there and, you know, I mean, I don't, I drive like an old man, okay? I mean, I drive like a very, very, very old man. I don't, I don't like speed at all. So, I, you know, I'd like to make it to that one if, I'll try. Next month in December, I probably can because it's, this one's gonna be early. So if I can, I will. Police commission meeting tomorrow. Um, I think I have something going on on Wednesday too. And I'll get back to you on that. Thursday's gonna be Upper Yoder Township. Yay, good times.